All right, again, I apologize and thank you all. For being here, we have a quorum of school committee members, so we'll call the school committee meeting to order at seven fourteen. The first item on the agenda is our public hearing for our FY twenty four budget. This is an opportunity for the public to shed their ideas, thoughts, input, to give us compliments or criticism, and we sit here and take it. So I'm just gonna wait a minute or so in case any public does come. And then we'll move on, and we as a school committee will be voting on the budget a little bit later on in the meeting. And if we have public that would like to comment at another time because they couldn't get on earlier, I'm sure the committee will be reasonable and allow any comments to come in at a later time, including when we are having our budget discussion. Okay? All right. That said, we've got a lot of work to do, so we're gonna move on, and the next item on the agenda is the review of the agenda and perpetual calendar in March. There are a few things, I think it's the deadline for filing for school committee election papers. Obviously, tonight is the review of the budget, the budget hearing and a vote. Our town came out, and then it looks like there's some information in regards to the budget at the region, and looks like the school council does a survey in March, is that still? No, so you guys can update the perpetual calendar. I do like it because it sort of gives me a heads up on things, especially some important things such as when we vote on school choice, it's always nice to know in advance that we should be having a discussion about school choice so that on that evening, we're not suddenly trying to figure out what's going on. All right. Next, warrants, and I know that the warrants are generally submitted to you, Trevor. I can't tell Steve on the, on, on this Zoom.
I can read them.
Yeah, Caitlin sent them to me, and then Steve sent a couple of others.
All right, so Caitlin, if you just want to read the warrant number and the amount.
Sure, warrant number three zero one seven for forty one thousand three hundred fifty eight dollars and fifty cents. Warrant number three zero one eight for eleven thousand two hundred thirty one dollars and ninety six cents. Payroll warrants three one seven for eighty six thousand sixty two dollars and thirty eight cents, and payroll warrant three one eight for eighty six thousand two hundred twenty four dollars and sixty seven cents.
Great, Trevor, do you have any others in addition to that?
Yeah, so there's also a accounts payable three zero one nine dated March twenty first, twenty twenty three in the amount of thirty three thousand sixty eight dollars and forty four cents. There is an additional payroll one, number three nineteen for March twentieth, twenty twenty three, in the amount of eighty three thousand dollars, sorry, eighty three thousand three hundred and eighty two dollars and ninety nine cents.
Okay, so Steve is our representative, and as you could see from the policies that we're reviewing, he is the one authorized to sign the warrants, but obviously it doesn't negate us having the responsibility, so why don't we motion to acknowledge that the warrants are submitted into our record? How about Julie, you motion, and we'll see who gets the second.
He's here.
Okay.
All right. So moved.
All right. And a second. All right, and that was you, Jen, correct? Awesome, and Steve, just so you know, if you're on here, we did just submit the warrants, I think you had forwarded them to Trevor. Okay, so all in favor, hey, Zai?
Martel, I.
Taylor, I.
Sullivan, I.
And Bethany's an I too, I'm sure. Okay, and any gifts? No, any grants? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from February sixteenth, twenty twenty three?
So moved.
And a second.
Seconded.
All right, any edits, changes? All in favor, hey, Zai?
Martel, I.
Rose, I. Taylor, I.
Sullivan, I.
Great, thank you. So we're gonna go on to the unfinished business and updates, so we'll start with capital projects, building, those sorts of things, and I will mention that I know that Jackie, you're gonna talk probably a little bit about the issue with the generator and stuff, but I did notice there were a lot of trucks there last night I pulled in, it looked like maybe they were using that as a staging area or something for electrical. Anyhow, Steve, you want to give us an update on what's going on with the roof or anything, or haven't you had any meetings?
We have not, oh, well, we did start talking about the Gale Associates quote, and what we did was we removed, because we figured that roofers aren't carpenters, we removed all of the carpentry work that they would have done from the bid, and we'll get someone else to hang the gutter, hang new gutters, and to replace all the rotted wood, and we'll let the roofers be roofers.
Okay, well, that sounds like a good thing. Telephones, how are they working?
Great, the telephones are in, and they're working great, and the only thing that is a little weird is we can't, well, we can use the paging using the telephone around the whole school, but it sounds really badly, it sounds really bad because of the converter they have to use to be able to do it without us rewiring the whole building, which is silly for just that. But what we did figure out is that we had this like old fashioned microphone, like, like the ones you remember from like Greece in the fifties, and they would go like and so we found one of those and we like plugged it into the system and it works really well, so it's kind of funny, but I'm kind of feeling like I'm a nineteen like sixties principal using it, but it's a workaround, but besides.
Milk that to the end where you have kids say hello to Rida Ha?
I know, it's really funny, I actually want to get like a little xylophone, but um but besides that, the phones themselves are working really well, so that, that had, that was a very smooth transition.
Awesome, I'm glad to hear that, and kitchen floor, I believe, is on the agenda for capital improvements.
Yeah, well, yes, but there's been some issues with that, I don't know if it's gonna actually happen in time for what they need to be able to move it forward to town meeting because they, Matt, you know, got some quotes, and they wanted quotes from two other places, and no one else, no one's getting back to Matt, even though he's reached out several times, and we've been through this before, and it's really hard for us to always get quotes, and it's, we always end up going with Summerlin, and because they're the only ones who really want to do it here, and, and so we're running into the same issue where we're only really able to find Sunderland, Summerlin, and you know, Matt's having people from the town emailing him, asking him for the quotes, but he's also been doing everything else around the school, including the phones and the video stuff, and then he was, you know, obviously dealing with the snow over the past week, so we don't have those, we don't have three quotes. But it also brings up, you know, something I wanted to bring up to the committee, which is like, I don't really think it's my head custodian's job to be finding quotes for things, so and the town is asking him to do that, so I think he can be part of the process, but I don't think it's really appropriate for him to like own that job. And it is how it's worked in the past, and so we've kind of been doing it, but just like everybody, we're, we have more and more responsibilities on our plate, and I, I just, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be bringing it up to Becky, and she already kind of knows, Matt kind of told her, but I, I do think that maybe the head custodian in charge of getting the quotes is not
Right. Has, is the buildings committee involved in this at all?
They're asking Matt for the quotes, is, is what I'm, I mean, I think Bob Groves has reached out and Becky both.
Okay, but they're not, they're not getting quotes?
They're not, they're not out getting the quotes, no.
Just for, I'm just curious, what did we get a quote from Summerlin, and how, what was the quote?
I don't remember off the top of my head what the quote is, but yes, we got a quote from Summerlin, and it's reasonable, and it's, and we have done our entire school with Summerlin over the past nine years, they've been really good to us.
Because I believe one of the policies was on quotes and such, so there was a dollar amount with that, so be curious to see where it fits into that policy and whether we need to do more, I don't know.
And obviously, like truly, the roof is the most important thing, so you know, it's, I haven't been super vocal about like this need because I really want the focus to be on the roof, but you know, the kitchen floor needs it. Can we get through another year? Yes, of course, if we absolutely had to, I mean, it's, it's not great, but, but so that's just it, like, so I don't know where we stand on that, honestly, like that, we just had emails going back and forth today about it too, so I don't know exactly where we stand on it right now, but you know, Matt's doing the best he can, he can't make people call him back or come to check it out.
Steve?
Yeah, so at this point, the buildings committee is not involved, but the two big issues are that, as Jackie mentioned, the prac, past practice was that we had a principal who was adamant that he and his crew were in charge of anything that went on inside the school, but not on the exterior of the school, and that's how that whole thing came down, and then we also have a buildings committee slash capital planning committee member who is demanding, even though in the past three years, the practice of the capital planning was to accept only the Summerlin quote because we knew that that's the only one we were getting, but this year, one of the members has made it very clear that nothing is happening without three quotes from anyone and everyone.
Well, if you all recall, we tried to ironate, iron out a process of how this will all work, and it didn't get ironed out, and here we are again in the same boat. My feeling is the buildings committee should be getting the quotes because the problem we've experienced is they don't like the quotes we're getting them from or whatever, because we are not people that are experienced with buildings and all that, go ahead, Steve.
That was the previous buildings committee, this buildings committee has no problem with any of that stuff.
So, okay, so I'll reach out to the new buildings committee to ask them to get the quotes, is that?
And Matt has, Matt has reached out, I for, I can go back in my emails right now if you want, but I know that Home Depot is one of them because we had to try to find something else, and that was one of the only things, and, and we're having trouble getting them to come, and then there's one other company that I think in West Springfield, maybe, that he's been, been really trying to get to come.
Right, so the problem I see is, for example, like when we needed the water heater, and then the town administrator ordered a water heater, and it wasn't the same size or the right fit, and the buildings committee wanted to know why we were going with that, I mean, again, we're, we're back all the way around, again, I will reach out to the buildings committee. I think we need to iron it out, and I understand that perhaps previous principals wanted it a certain way, that's fine. This next, the next school committee, and we can change what we want to do, things change, I understand, but it doesn't really make sense, right, at least at this time, to do it the way it's, we're doing it. So I will reach out to the buildings committee, okay?
Yes, obviously, Matt greeting the, greeting the people, bringing them in, showing them around, getting them what they need, that's all under his per, like, that is his job, but yeah, this, that other step would be great, Dan, thank you.
Right, because what I see is the buildings committee comes in, they look at the floor because they may say, oh, you don't need to replace the whole floor because I have experience in here with tile, all we need to do is do this, this, and this, and we just replaced eighteen tiles. I don't know, that's why we have the buildings committee, because we, I don't know how tile work, so I'll reach out to them, and I won't believe her this, but you can tell me. All right. School choice funds, I think it's sort of on there, we have a plan in place, I think we can take this off the agenda, how do you feel? All right, we all feel comfortable with what we're doing with the school choice funds, perfect. Off, I will let Pam know that as well. School safety features, I know that's sort of been an ongoing conversation, cameras and such.
Yes, well, one of our major items is checked off our list, which was the phones. So now we're on the second item on our list, which was cameras, and Debbie Lee asked me a question, and I did say I would bring it up to this committee because I don't necessarily know the answer, and that is do we need to have a policy? And this would be for the, obviously, the policy committee to write it, but I'm asking this committee if we need a policy around video.
Yes.
Okay.
M A S C has a blue version of it, so.
Okay, so then I will bring that to the superintendent as well to put in, put forward towards policy, but that's, that's important for Debbie to know, and we were supposed to have a safety committee meeting this week, and then we had the snowstorm, so we have not met, but we're gonna reschedule that for either next week or the week after, and review the stuff with the phones that happened, and our next step is to do a similar process that we did with the phones with video.
Excellent, so believe that on there as it's an ongoing project, and, and once cameras are in, it may come up again, but at that point, it would not be on the agenda, okay? All right, new business, we have the FY twenty four budget. So why don't we just start off with a motion regards to the budget, accepting the budget as presented, and give us the total amount that's on that? Does anyone have that right in front of them? Caitlin, do you have the total amount, please?
Yes, do you want me to share my screen with the summary or just tell you the total amount?
Um, would the committee like to see the summary? I mean, I know we've seen it several times, but Suzie, would you want to see it again? You, you probably have it, right?
Yeah, I have it, I don't need to see it, but.
Do you want to see it, Jen? No, okay, so do we have a motion to approve the FY twenty four budget as presented with a total amount of?
Do you want the total use of funding or the amount for the towns minus the, the grants? The total, so that is for two million five hundred sixteen thousand five hundred and one dollars.
Okay, and to add to that, an increase of how much, what percentage from last year?
So we have a total use of funding increase of four point one percent, but with a revenue sources, a net total of three point seven two percent.
Perfect, all right, Trevor, did you get that? Because with the revenue sources, it's really the three point seven two.
Yeah, I was gonna confirm it's three point seven two, you said?
Yeah.
Yeah, got it. Okay, so I think I just made that motion.
Motion to approve the budget.
And a second.
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
I can did.
All right, so we have the motion and the second, I know we've reviewed the budget, does anyone have any comments? Was there any further discussion regarding the budget? Okay, and no one else from the public here, okay? So that said, we have to do the roll call vote, as you know, so all in favor, hey, Zai?
Martel, I.
Rose, I. Taylor, I.
Sullivan, I.
Thank you all very much, and Caitlin, I really appreciate you and Jennifer and Jackie going back and sort of sharpening your pencils and, you know, making reasonable changes that were reflecting where we were at that point, and resubmitting the budget, I hope the finance committee found that to be good. Excellent. All right, we also have on the academic calendar for twenty three, twenty four, we have a motion to approve the calendar, and then Jackie, you can talk about it.
Motion to approve the calendar?
All right, Jen. Let's get a second.
I can did.
Awesome, so Jackie, anything on the calendar that you'd like to share, any concerns, everything seems to match, lineups?
Yeah, we, we have to kind of start where we are recommending case in point this year with the amount of snow days that we have, and I think you all got the email I sent today around what the law around snow days and what we have to do, so if we go any later than that, we run the risk of having a headache because we are, we are the town in the union that certainly gets the most snow, almost always, maybe Wendell a little bit too. And so we really need the buffer of the days, and so the rest is a pretty typical calendar like we normally have, same vacations as Amherst and surrounding schools, and and we, we add in Chutesbury our conferences and things like that on there too, for, just for families, but in general, it's, it lines up pretty well with Amherst as well.
Great, and does it still allow the Union Twenty Eight to have their union wide?
Yes, yep, we have two days built in for union wide curriculum days, and then the leadership team just hammered out several, actually, I think one Wednesday a month, that, that's not on the calendar, but it's something for you to know about our, about our scheduling. We're trying to do whole union wide based things, one, one Wednesday a month together, which is shared resources with all different types of professional development and things like that, so just to let you know where we're doing that as well.
That's great, thank you. Okay, Jen Taylor?
Thank you, I just wanted to bring up, I know it's not on the agenda, and I definitely don't want to extend the meeting, but about, talking about snow and Chutesbury, and the fact that Amherst was open yesterday, and that the, it put a lot of people at risk, including the teachers as well as the students, and I wish that we as a school committee would reach out to their school committee or to their board, you know, their superintendent and talk about that a little bit at some point.
I see Steve smiling, I had, I did have parents reach out to me and they want, it's still hard for some people to really understand that we make separate decisions than Amherst. They, people know it, but they kind of don't really get it, and so when we cancel, and you know, half the reason why we, well, we canceled because Chutesbury was a mess, but besides that, we can't do delays on Wednesdays because we don't, then we don't have enough time to count it as a day. So if it happens on a Wednesday like that, even if we could have done a two hour delay, we, we can't do a two hour delay and have it work, so so like people don't really understand that, but then on the same, same thing, like they don't understand why Amherst calls it different, but you know, Mike is his own superintendent, and he is able to call it, he decided to do a one hour delay, I don't know why he didn't do a two hour delay. There was a bus that got stuck on Montague Road, and I know there was a lot of feelings about that, and similar, Jen, a lot of feelings about prioritizing student and teacher safety that live up in one of the member towns, so.
Yeah, and Jen, I do know that Jennifer and Mike generally do have conversations, they have conversations with all kinds of road crew people as well, right, Steve? But I will also say Amherst was a totally different world than up here, so I mean, I had to close my shop because we all lived, you know, Asheville, Plainfield, Goshen, Middlefield, Chutesbury, and you know, people were like, there's, there was just wet down in East Hampton, so, but none of us could get there. So I think they do the best they can, hopefully we don't encounter it again, okay?
Steve.
So we need a vote. Was there a motion and a second, Trevor? Yes, okay, all in favor, hey, Zai?
Martel, I.
Rose, I. Taylor, I.
Sullivan, I.
Okay, thanks, Trevor, for keeping me in, on, on track here, all right, school choice seats?
Yes, I would like to open school choice seats, again, particularly with focus on our younger grades this year, in particular, on students going into first grade.
Excellent. Any discussion on that, does any school committee member have any comments or concerns or questions? Steve?
I just have a question, how many of our school choice students choice down to Amherst?
That's a good question. I don't know exactly, but my estimation would be about eighty percent to ninety percent go down to Amherst.
Oh, so it is that many, because I know that I've, we've always felt that kids' school choice to Chutesbury for Chutesbury, and not that golden ticket to get down to Amherst.
Right, and we do make it very clear when they come here, I do, I do have to say, like, very specifically, we are our own district, and so you actually do need to apply for, for school choice into Amherst. Off, I do say oftentimes that's accepted, but not, it's not a guarantee.
That's, that was a one year thing where the state had said no, because it, now every student that is in Chutesbury is entitled to go, they can, they get a free ticket to the middle school, just like Leverett, Pelham, and Amherst.
I did not know that, I, I thought that Mike Morris sold us.
I, I was shocked to learn that last week at our meeting where we talked about school choice, because I thought they had closed that, but it's not true that every, that's why the high school doesn't offer school choice because it's filled with all of the
Other.
the other schools feeding it.
Interesting, what I, what I am seeing, though, just in general, is more students looking for a different middle school option. So you know, we, I think there, there was several students applying to Four Rivers, there's several students applying to PVPA, a couple to that East Hampton charter. This year, there's a few considering like Harts Brook, so there's, there's I'm seeing more of an uptick in, in people looking for maybe some different middle school options. But in terms of the students that we have, unless they go to like PB, you know, PVPA was one of the places that sometimes kids would go. Most of them do, unless they go private, private, like Stoneley Burnham or something, they go into Amherst, yeah.
Steve, since there was some confusion on that, can you see if you can get that in writing, whatever you got that explains students going from Chutesbury to Amherst, that it's a streamline?
Yeah, because I was shocked that Pelham was still taking so many school choice kids, but it turns out that they get what I call the golden ticket, where if they go to Pelham, they, they gotta, they are invited right in to the middle school, but I'll, I can, I'll pull it out of the minutes when they get distributed from the last meeting.
That would be very helpful for me, and we always heard that about Pelham, but we thought it's because Pelham have, has a little bit of more of a relationship with Amherst because they get their food service from Amherst, and they, you know, there's, there's more of like a, the principal attends the Amherst principal meetings, so like there's, there's just a little more of a connection, and that's just what I chalked it up to, but there was no, no one told me that, that was me making my own inferences, but it would be nice to have that information.
Yeah, that's that messed up. That's that Union Twenty-Six that is the Amherst and Pelham. And then Pel, and then Amherst stands alone at the same time. Yeah, but but as far as the middle school, the region Pelham Elementary has no standing just like shoots berry and Leverett.
So we'll appreciate getting that statement in writing. All right, Jen Taylor.
Thank you. Um, so I just wanted to say, I don't know that everybody's aware that PVPA has cut off shoots berry students this year. They had fulfilled their quota already. So before the lottery happened, they let everybody who applied know that it would not be accepting anymore shoots berry students and all students would be removed from the lottery. So that will increase numbers moving to the middle school this year. And I think other schools, private schools and charters are filling rapidly. So there's less, fewer spaces available.
All right, moving on, Superintendent Jennifer is not here tonight, but do we have a report on her behalf by name one?
I did not receive one. Did you, Caitlin?
I did not.
No worries.
Did we do a roll call vote for that school choice thing?
No, we vote the next meeting. This was the opportunity to have a discussion about it before we vote. And I did notice that again, it doesn't quite line up, but I know that our meetings schedules are a little off. So that's where again, it's good to have a perpetual calendar because if we don't have a certain meeting, you know, you want to have these sort of ducks in a row. All right. Okay, Director of Finance and Operations, Caitlin.
Okay, so the Wellness Advisory Council met earlier this month for a third meeting. Jessica Carlson, Belanger, Stephen Kara and Katie Harrington all attended representing shoots berry elementary school. It was a great group to have since we focused our time on assessing our current practices in modules three and five of the CDC's School Health Index. Those two modules are physical education and physical activity programs and school health services. Steven and Katie had great insight into your current phys ed and health services and areas of potential growth. So some of the ideas that came up were increasing PE time for students, although SES students have the most time in PE in the union. Increasing time for PE teachers to collaborate with teachers from other schools to share curriculum programs and communication to families and community members. And also encouragement and access to professional development for classroom teachers to provide more opportunities for movement breaks in all classrooms. Also, opportunities for in-house professional development for school nurses. Our next meeting is scheduled in May. So the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative completed their bidding process for heating fuel for next year. That bid was awarded to Sprague, so now we have a contract with them for next year. So we are locking in the price for eleven thousand gallons of number two heating oil and it'll be locked in tomorrow morning. And finally, as expected, will be over budget on heating oil, but the fuel line has been the fuel line has been completely spent out and now we're paying for oil using rural aid money. However, after comparing current expenditure report to the report from last year in the March meeting, I'm optimistic that we're in good shape as we get closer to the end of the fiscal year. I really have to thank Jackie for diligently watching over the budget, understanding the fiscal responsibilities of the school. Do you have any questions about my report?
No, thank you both. Okay, Principal's Report.
Hi, already talked a lot. So um, the phone, we talked about the phones, we talked about the cameras. You got my, my email today around the last day of school and the last day of school for teachers. And I just was explaining, like, people were getting angry at me for for extending school and I just had to kind of remind people that it's not my cho- not my choice about doing that. So the MCAS schedule will be coming out tomorrow for grades three through six. We test one grade a day. We don't, some schools like do all of the grades around the same time or the same week or even the same day. We do not do that. And again, we do not teach to the test, but we do make sure that students feel prepared for the test. And what I say is we are certainly not a standardized test-based school. It is not our philosophy. However, we are a public school and this is a measure that is actually important that our kids at least try their best on. Because what it does is it allows us to have the autonomy that we continue to have to be able to do the things that we like to do and that we feel like is best for kids. And also, you know, I do think it's our responsibility in this day and age to even just teach some students some basic test-taking skills. This is, this is certainly not a drill and kill. We do not emphasize it at all. As some of you might know, like Bethany might know, sometimes the kids are excited about it because we give them like snacks and special pencils and they get gum. And you know, they have all these tools and they get to go and like an awful little, we make like little you know, like little cube, little cubicle office spaces that I think they think is really cool. Because it's so different than what we normally do to them. It's kind, and we don't make it scary that it's kind of like a fun, a fun thing that we do. You know, of course, there's going to be a, some kids who get nerve, that get nervous, right? But we really try to like not emphasize that, but we do emphasize that we always try our best. I hope I hope in whatever you do, you try your best. And and that, you know, it does, it does matter for us that kids take it. Because we get points on participation. So it does matter if the students actually take it. And it does matter. Like I said, for the autonomy that we have to be able to continue to make the decisions that we want to make in terms of curriculum and instruction. So so that's coming up. As you all know, we did very well last year, even though it was a pandemic year. And you know, we did have an incredible student growth scores, which is what I focus on. And I briefly just wanted to talk about that. So we get like graded on on the basic performance of the students. But then we have something called the SGP. It's a student growth product percentile. And what that is, is when students take the test in third grade, they're kind of like lumped into like liked scoring cohorts across the state. And there's a mathy equation. And Caitlin can probably explain it more than me because she was a math teacher. There's like a little mathy equation they use and they compare that student's growth every year in 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 the great, in the subject matters. And then they get like a number that kind of like tells you the growth a student has shown in a year. An average growth is like between forty and sixty, like they want students to get like a score between forty and sixty as like a years, a good year's growth. And we, as you know, had the highest SGP in the state across all schools, including elementary, middle and high, all public schools in the state. And so our SGP in ELA was was like in the, in the seventies and our SGP in math was in the sixties, which is like really strong after a pandemic. And then we get a percentile, an accountability percentile. And ours was an eighty and it was significantly higher than many schools around us. So like I said, we don't like teach to the test, but we ask them to try their best. And oftentimes it it really helps us in terms of how we do. So that's that. And then I just, I let, you know, I I talked to Dan, I emailed Dan briefly today, but I did want to update people about our generator. And so as you know, shoots berry elementary school is also the emergency site for the town, the emergency shelter. And we have an awesome generator that we have utilized over the years. When we're out of power, it it powers the school very well, like you wouldn't and let you would hear the noise outside, but inside you don't, you don't even know that it's powering the school. It works really well. Well, within this storm, the generator has been powering the school for three days. And today we had Pachoric, the electricians we use come and take a look at it to try to like manually switch it over to the regular power. And they found that the converter or the adapter or the switch, one of those words is like dead, like it's, it, they can't switch it over. And so he is he doesn't have, he doesn't deal the parts of our brand of generator. He deals the parts of the other brand of generator. So he's trying to help us get the parts of said generator, but it's going to be upwards of anywhere between fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. Now, this is not something that the school budget pays for. This is a town expense. So Becky is in on this with us and she's already contacted, you know, the insurance company and all of, all of those pieces. But the, the thing that matters for the school and the school committee is, is that tomorrow morning, the electricians are going to come shut down the power at like six AM. He's gonna switch it back to what it was like pre-generator. So like ten years ago. And so we're going to be operating on like the basic utility power, but what that me, until the generator can get fixed, which could be weeks. He's not, he can't guarantee. Apparently they don't sell the converter that we need anymore and it has to be like a different fix, of course. And so what that means is that if there's another storm or if if shoots berry lose loses power, we can't rely on the generator to power the school to have school. And it means that we would have to cancel school like Swift River has to. Unfortunately, they do not have a generator. They have three more snow days than us because of that. That we would have to cancel school because we won't have the generator to rely on. So that's where we stand with that. And I'm very hopeful that at six AM tomorrow, it switches over. We did check the, the propane and we got it filled today. So we have enough propane for the, if we have to like be on the generator for tomorrow. We can do that, but it's all going to depend on what happens at like six AM tomorrow. So I just wanted to give you an update on that. And again, like, never thought I would know so much about generators and stuff, yet I do. And besides that, tho- those are my biggest things. We're working on our play, which I talked about, that everyone's really excited about. And the spaghetti dinner is coming up, but just so you're aware, we we're toning it down. There's going to be one serving. That's really important, actually. And so that, so that tradition is coming back, just a little bit toned down. And yeah, that's, that's about my report for now.
Any question?
Will be mustaches?
Yes, there will be mustaches.
And I volunteered last year, but I'll, I'll volunteer my services again. If you're looking for a non-parent volunteer to play in the kitchen.
Yeah, I will tell the the families that are heading it, that you are willing to do that. That'd be great.
Yeah, it's only, it was only twelve years in a row.
Do we have a date of the play yet?
Yes, the, well, the tentative date is Wednesday, June fourteenth. That's the tentative date. And we're going to have schools from several schools from the union want to come and see it during the day. We might have to do a day performance on Wednesday, a night performance on Wednesday and a day performance on Thursday. Because you know, it's a whole school thing, so I don't, I'm worried about fitting everybody too. So because people want like grandparents to come and, you know, all that fun stuff. And and this is going to be really great. And so I want to, I want the audience to be able to come. But we can't obviously sit seat that many people and that's just a lot of people in general. So I'm trying to figure out the best way to manage the attending of the show.
Okay.
We just need to build a giant outdoor theater with like a whole sound system and seating. That's all, that's all.
That's all. Well, you were kind of going to do something with that with the gazebo. Start with that. All right. Steve, Amherst Pelham.
Yeah, there's not too much report, but I will say the Jen, that Dr. Morris is a hardcore. If Amherst is green, then we're having school. Because you know, because that's, that's where the bulk of the students come from. And he honestly doesn't give much of a crap about whether it snows in shoots berry or not. And I will say that this past storm, if you went down even before the co-op in Leverett, going down through North Leverett, that the snowbanks are so tiny compared to ours. So he just, he really doesn't care. And he, he'll make the the shoots parade buses run on his schedule as long as he can. Although I did mention though, that Amherst is switching to that Friday half day once a month, so that it won't it won't interfere with shoots berries Wednesday and Leverett's Wednesday early releases. And we, we had our budget presentation last week and it's, the school committee approved it. Well, as far as we can approve it without the four towns approving it first and but we gave it a thumbs up. And we spent a lot of time in executive session talking about the extended talks on the contract. And it wasn't, was not a fun conversation.
Of times. Steve, I have a question for you about the ongoing saga with the turf.
Okay, I'm ready.
Well, has there, is there a definitive? I know they were going to look at the the, the turf as opposed to grass. And that was the direction they were going. Is that still the direction they're going?
At, at this point, the school committee is still sticking to, we're going with that one field of the artificial turf. But at the same time, we're still going to have to rebuild the other fields all around it and they would all be natural grass. But we really, we haven't, there's no definitive decision on whether we're going one way or the other yet.
Okay. I'd go with grass.
Well, I, I know, I, I would love to go with grass. I up until middle school, my dream was to play second base for the Red Sox and on off days work on the maintenance crew. I mean, I, I love mowing grass. I love laying the stripes. I like the smell of it. I love getting dirty. But we really need that one field that can be used regardless of the weather, like, I mean, with the, the snow we've got now, the spring sports started the week after February vacation. And they won't be able to get onto that field until sometime in late April or early May and their seasons are half over by then.
All right. Union Twenty-Eight, I don't think we have anything to report, correct? All right. And Collaborative, we haven't met. I did attend the Social Justice and Equity Conference that they had at the University of Massachusetts on Saturday. I actually went, I volunteered to be a helper. So it was very interesting, very nice and good speakers. I'm excited to go on Monday to Norwood for a conference. This is through the Collaborative. It's on racial trauma. The speaker is Hassan Davis, who is a speaker I heard, I think in Houston. He refers to himself as being a hope dealer. That's hope with an H. He is a person who has been incarcerated. He is a big, strong advocate of universal design for learning. And just a really interesting speaker. And I think the piece that I took away from hearing him the last time he spoke was really about hope and that if we can inspire hope in individuals, I think the percentages, if there's two out of every ten, you're at least getting some people who are changing the trajectory of their life and it's usually inspired by teachers or someone in a school that gives them hope. So I'll tell you about that conference when I see you the next time. And that's it. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to whip through these policies. I think we'll continue on the sort of route that we have been on the first readings. Instead of us reading through each of those policies here tonight, what I'm going to suggest is that if you see any kind of edits, please send it to I'll say Jennifer and then she can, or or maybe Jackie. Would, how do you prefer that, Jackie?
I prefer it go to Jen.
Okay. The only thing that I noticed was just a little bit of inconsistent. Okay, um, the only thing that I noticed um was just a little bit of inconsistency um in a couple of the policies. Um. I noticed that when it said race, uh, there was an asterisk on uh some of the policies and the asterisk. Then there, there was a definition of based upon like hair and hair texture and those kinds of things, which is I think the new law in Massachusetts. But I think on two policies, GCF and AC, it had race, but there was no asterisk. So I think just to be consistent, so I'll, I'll email that to Jennifer. Um, and if anyone else has anything, they can just do the same thing. Um. So now we'll go through the uh second readings and first votes. Um, and if you can remind me, I think that last one on DJE procurement requirements, I wanna. Refer to that before we end the meeting, so. To make it easy for Trevor, uh, how about we have a, one of you just do the motions and another one do, does the seconds and. We can kinda go through it quickly, so you can unmute yourselves and be ready to go. How about Julie, you wanna do the motions and Jen, how about you do the uh seconds? Cuz Bethany's got her hands full. Alright, so do we have a motion for DGA authorized signatures?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, any edits? Okay, all in favor, is I?
Martel, I.
Rose, I.
Taylor, I.
Sullivan, I.
Okay. Uh, policy DH bonded employees and officers.
Uh, so moved.
Seconded.
Okay, any edits, changes? All in favor, is I?
Martel, I.
Rose, I.
Taylor, I.
Sullivan, I.
Alright, and uh motion to approve DI fiscal accounting and reporting.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, is I?
Martel, I.
Rose, I.
Taylor, I.
Sullivan, I.
And just a real quick question for Caitlin, you're obviously aware of the policies and bonding and all of that stuff that goes with it, right?
I've attended the policy meetings about the fiscal policies.
Okay.
Bless her.
And the bonding of individuals and all of that. Okay. Alright, uh, a motion to approve DIE audits.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Is I?
Martel, I.
Rose, I.
Taylor, I.
Sullivan, I.
Excellent. A motion to, to approve policy DJ purchasing.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor? Is I?
Martel, I.
Rose, I.
Taylor, I.
Sullivan, I.
Perfect. Uh, motion to approve DJE procurement requirements.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, discussion. I got something here, so looking at that, um. A procurement for a supply or service in the amount of ten thousand dollars. Or greater, but not more than fifty thousand shall be awarded to the responsible party offered, offering the needed quantity or supply. Among three written quotations sought and retained by the procurement officers, so. Does look like we have to get the three quotes. Alright, any discussion further? Okay, all in favor, vote Jen.
Can we edit that, is it possible for us to put a hold on that vote and edit that policy? To put the responsibility back.
Or qualify who the procurement officers are?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, there is more to it too, I just read that piece of it, um. I would say it's overall best practice, but I think there was a piece in there that you still have some flexibility of granting. Oh, uh, well, let's read it, um, let me pull it up again.
I can share my screen, I think I have it up.
That'd be good, cuz I'm looking at it on my, on my phone, it's small.
I really hope I'm hitting the right screen here.
Um. So the first part is real bidding and that's about usually the higher over the fifty thousand, um. And let's see.
Alright, let me just get it a little bigger for you.
Yeah.
There we go.
Okay, uh, actually Julie, do you wanna just read through it?
Sure. All purchases of materials and equipment and all contracts for construction or maintenance will conform to the requirements of law. To foster greater efficiency, the district will enter into state and local, local intergovernmental agreements where appropriate for procurement. Or use of common or shared services. For any supply or service over fifty thousand dollars, biz will be advertised appropriately. Suppliers will be invited to have their names placed on distribution lists to receive invitations to bid. When specifications are prepared, they will be distributed to all merchants and firms who have indicated an interest in bidding. All bids will be submitted in sealed envelopes addressed to the superintendent and plainly marked with the name of the bid. And the time of the bid opening. Bids will be opened and a, in public at the time specified and all bidders will be invited to be present. The committee reserves for the district the right to reject. Any or all bids and to accept the bid that appears to be in the best interest of the school district. The committee reserves for the district the right to waive any informality in. Or reject any or all bids or any part of any bid. Any bid may be withdrawn prior to the scheduled time for the opening of the bids. Any bid, yeah?
Just wanna interrupt you there because I do wonder, you know, again, looking at different providers specifically of the flooring. Um, where, you know, it says, the committee reserves for the district the right to reject any. Or all bids and to accept the bid that appears to be in the best interest of the school district. That gives a lot of flexibility, obviously, it would be something you would have to um. You know, have a reason for, like, it couldn't be like, oh, will we always go with Dan Hayes's flooring company? He serves on the school committee, you know, it could be. We're not getting any other bids or um. They provided really quality service, we've been happy with them, sort of like with Crocker, you know, I think. So that, I, I'm happy about that statement, alright. Go ahead.
Okay, any bid received after the time and date specified will not be considered. All bids will remain firm for a period of thirty days after opening. The bidder to whom an award is made may be required to enter into a written contract with the school district. A procurement for a supply or service in the amount of ten thousand dollars or greater. By not more than fifty thousand shall be awarded to the responsible party offering the needed. Quantity or supply among three written quotations sought and retained by the procurement officer. A procurement in the amount of ten thousand or less shall be obtained through the exercise of sound business practices.
Okay, now Jackie, you can take that down, but Jackie, I think you were mentioning something about procurement officer, right?
Yeah, I was saying, could we? Identify who the procurement officers are, like, that's a random term.
I believe it is in one of the other policies. That they identify the superintendent as a procurement officer and they also reference teams. That it's always efficient to have teams of people working together in this process, so I think they have the authority, but they can delegate it. So if, for example, the superintendent wanted it to be Caitlin, Caitlin could do it.
But I thought we were trying to get the procurement officers to be the building committee.
Well. No, we still hold the authority, but I think in our own internal process, we want the buildings committee to be the ones who. Who tell us what to do, like, some schools have a department, we don't have a department. The department is, in my opinion, the buildings committee. That's where we need them to help us with who they're going to get the quotes from. Because that will make the process a lot smoother, because then they're gonna say, well, we got. These three reputable places, this is how we feel about them, we work with these people, we know what they're, we, we know the lingo and the language. Um. And they're gonna also assess what they need, you know, like I said, if we think about the sidewalks. You know, there was a lot of discussion about the differences of what was really needed. Was it just replacing individual pieces or did we do all of the sidewalks everywhere, so. In my opinion, that it starts with the buildings committee. We should also have a part of that, knowing like if they wanna do something that we don't agree with, we should be able to do more. Alright, Jen?
Yeah, thanks, um, so, uh, two things, one is, there was a really minor typo in there, I think. Where it says buy fifty thousand dollars or whatever that line is, it's, I think the word should be but there. Not a big deal, I guess, well, you, and I should just email that out, um, but just wondering if we can separate procurement officer. From being the one who gets the bids, um, because it seems like a procurement officer would be the one that would secure. The actual service, but it might make sense to make that two separate jobs where someone else gets the bids. And then someone procures the services and oversees the whole thing.
So the procurement officer would be the one that goes to the procurement process and that would involve the bidding. So because we're a municipality and it is a town building and there's a, um, and anything over ten thousand would be a capital project. And we would have, we have to work with the town, so, um. So Union twenty-eight and the schools don't have a lot of experience with procurement because a lot of it goes through the towns for the capital projects. For the buildings because they're town-owned, um, things that are bigger like transportation, uh, the oil bid. Those we usually do, um, bar, we do the bidding process through like the collaborative. Because they're able to provide us with, with a, a larger scale procurement process.
Right, so my feeling is I think that the policy is fine, I think it really is. Uh. Legally. Sound. Um, but what we do internally and process and who those committees of people are and all of that, I think we can do. The buildings committee. Okay, but we have a motion and a second. Does everyone feel comfortable voting on it? Okay, all in favor, is I?
Martel, I.
Rose, I.
Taylor, I.
Sullivan, I.
Okay. Alright, and a motion to approve DK payment procedures.
So moved.
Okay.
Seconded.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Is I?
Martel, I.
Rose, I.
Taylor, I.
Sullivan, I.
Alright, and final vote on DD, a motion to approve for grants, proposals and special projects.
So moved.
Seconded, sorry.
Any discussion? All in favor, is I?
Martel, I.
Rose, I.
Taylor, I.
Sullivan, I.
And a motion to approve DBC budget deadlines and schedules.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor, is I?
Martel, I.
Rose, I.
Taylor, I.
Sullivan, I.
Alright, and a motion to approve DBD budget planning.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor, is I?
Martel, I.
Rose, I.
Taylor, I.
Sullivan, I.
Okay, and a most do approve DBG budget adoption procedures.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor, is I?
Martel, I.
Rose, I.
Taylor, I.
Sullivan, I.
Okay, and a motion to approve DBJ budget transfer.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? You all in favor, is I?
Martel, I.
Rose, I.
Taylor, I.
Sullivan, I.
And that's what it's like to just move all of those, now imagine looking at them side by side. Like Bethany Hero Rose. And they're redoing all of them, which is the email that we just got today.
Yeah, did you get those lists from MASC also?
No, but I saw that there was a whole new set that would be coming down the road.
Yeah, they, they sent a whole list out. So I do appreciate the two of you doing all of that groundwork, it really does help um to expedite it here, so thank you very much. Alright, is there anything else? Thank you all for your patience and waiting to get on, especially you, Trevor, we didn't wanna waste your time. So thank you all very much and uh the meeting is adjourned, have a nice evening.
Thank you, everyone, hi, so good to see you all.
Take care.
Does anyone know if anyone has put in paperwork for running for the other two seats?
I don't know.
I know there's one parent that I know that's doing it. But that's just one. We still have another one.
Maybe you don't know about another one.
I hope so.
They have till April fifteenth, the fill it out and get it back in.
Till April fifteenth, that's good to know, I'll go try to see if I can get the word out a little bit.
Yeah, hey, Jackie, is, can that be, is that already or can that be in the Roadtown news?
I tend to not.
Yeah, I get that.
Per, not in my, maybe not in my section, but it could be. Maybe like an ad in like that, you know how we put those in, like, that, I could add it to it, but I'm not gonna put it in my letter. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, totally.
I worry a little bit about that, just because we don't know who won't be reaching out.
And it's like, I don't wanna. With, I don't know, I, it's like, I don't wanna like. I don't know, I, I, I just feel like it's not my role to do that.
Totally get that.
I think you're doing the right thing, I mean, honestly, like, I think, you know, there's announcements and through the town, through next door Chutesbury. Um, you know, I think it's great for people to do it, you know, if they're interested, they can always research it or look into it. Um, but once you start. We, we went down that years ago and it's not a good thing when you start picking people to try to get on a committee to force your agenda through.
Oh, no, 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 I think this was more thinking that often, like, very busy parents who would be really interested just might not.
I think the PTO was thinking about doing something and that because they're their own, they're their own thing. And it's not coming from me that that, it feels more, um, good.
That's fine.
I agree.
Alright, we can all go have.
Alright, goodnight, everybody.
Jackie, you need to take an updated picture so the next summer you can show yourself in the snow when you're.
That's actually a brilliant idea, I could do it every season, I could go out and take a picture. And then, yes, that's a great idea.
Also.
By having snow in the summertime.
Also, Steve, the fashion hero of this entire meeting. Is rainbow monkey hat, like, you're just out there killing it, plowing snow, entertaining the masses. I really still appreciate the honks every time. And all the kids in my house yell, Steve, and you do it.
Jackie, there was one thing that I meant to say when, after your um, report that I didn't, but if I could just take a moment now. I do appreciate you, what you've said about the MCAS scores, uh, you know, and, and how you use MCAS as a tool. Um, I will say, you know, being here a long time, there was a time when it was really negatively looked at. Um, but there was a principal who was here much before you. And we got the scores and in one area in particular in math, I think it was fractions, we, we did really, really bad. And when they looked at the curriculum, they, it was confusion over who was teaching it and it wasn't being taught. So that was a really good example of how it was a tool to find out that there were gaps in what we were doing in the school and not necessarily on the kids. So.
It's, it just is a, it's a dipstick for information, that's what I, that's how we look at it, you know, and. It's, it just is a, it's a dipstick for information, that's what I, that's how we look at it, you know, and we also. It's really important for us to keep our autonomy and so we also know that that's a vital, a vital piece. Uh, but it also helps like shape our curriculum choices and things like that, you know, like. Um, yeah, it's not my favorite, but it's not, it's not the end of the world either.
Yeah, good, thank you, all right, good night again, I'm leaving this time.